You are going.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Today, we welcome, welcome you to County Commission. Meeting today, it is, I don't even know what the date is today. This whole month's gotten away from me. October twenty-second.
No, why am I?
Today, uh, we're going to start out as always with our, uh, pledge of, excuse me, our pledge of allegiance and invocation. I've asked Lori, uh, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this morning. Followed up with Danny to, uh, offer us prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for this beautiful morning, for the opportunity we have to gather here for this public meeting of our county commission. We're especially grateful for the rain which we are receiving this month and for the nourishment that it brings to our valley. Pray that it may continue to meet our needs here as, as we grow and thrive. We pray that thy spirit may be with us in this meeting, that that, uh, things which are important may be discussed and important decisions may be made with thy guidance. We give thee thanks for the blessings of living in this beautiful land and, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. First of all, we'd like to excuse Commissioner Adams this morning. He had something on his calendar that he wasn't able to, to jockey around and asked our forgiveness for his absence this morning. I do have a copy of the minutes for our October eighth commission meeting. Oh, I've had a chance to review those. Commissioner Brinkerhoff has-
Yeah, in due time. Yes, I have. They were rather long, lengthy, luxurious, but, um, perfectly well done. Moved to approve.
All in favor? And I, and I will second that. They were, they were extra thick this week.
Lots of, uh, stuff went on last time. There's about six places where you'd assign to.
I think I got to the beginning. If I don't, you'll remind me. Okay, we'll start with our departmental reports tomorrow. What's that?
You said tomorrow.
Struggling. I'm not coming back tomorrow. Well, I'll, I'll be here tomorrow, but not here. Uh, we'll start with our departmental reports this morning is what I meant to come out of my mouth. Do we have the attorney's office this morning? Oh, there, I, look, Scott wasn't there a second ago and now he's there. Please.
Good morning, commission. Nice to be with you today.
Sure.
I've provided you a couple of documents. The first is my budget. Appreciate Dan getting me a copy of this before I had to report. It shows the county attorney's office numbers through the end of September, so about seventy-five percent of the year. And we have thirty-eight percent of our budget remaining, so we're ahead of schedule, should be fine. There shouldn't be any problems with us coming in under budget this year. And so we feel good about that. Uh, we've, we're always work hard to keep our budget in check. I don't know if you have any questions about the budget, but should be pretty self-explanatory. The second page is our statistics for, as of today, I just ran these this morning before I came over. And, uh, it's turning out to be a, a pretty substantial year. Uh, one of the, the numbers I pay particular attention to is the first one, the felony cases that are filed. And you can see with a little more than two months remaining in the year, we're at four hundred thirty-seven felony cases filed this year, which things would have changed a little bit after JRI. So if you compare that number to two thousand sixteen, you can see in, in two thousand sixteen, that number dropped fairly significantly from where it had been prior to that. And now we're starting to get back up to those pre-JRI numbers. Uh, we will finish, my estimation, a little over five hundred felony cases filed this year.
Five-seventy?
Uh, over five hundred, I said. Yeah. Which will be, which, like I said, that's, that's pre-JRI stuff, uh, for us. I think a lot of that has to do with the task force and the number of cases that they're, that they are filing. And if you look, uh, down to to the task force, which is the next number, just below that is one hundred thirty-six cases filed so far this year, which would put them on track to break last year's record of one hundred forty-seven, which is the most cases we've had filed by the task force since I've been in office.
Expect that to go up to one seventy-five, one eighty?
Uh, my guess is, I'm, I'm thinking hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty-five, maybe, right somewhere in there. So it'll be an all-time high. They have been busy. Uh, some of that was, was Dane Glacier. A lot of that was Dane Glacier. Uh, he's out now. I, but we anticipate Jay Quaid will step in and do the same. So we'll see. We'll keep an eye on those, those task force cases. They, they can turn a, a, a normal year into kind of a big one. Other than that, there's not, uh, really anything that significant in the numbers, uh, any, you know, changes or anything like that. We did have a, filed on a child homicide case, uh, in the last couple of weeks. It's the second one that we have in our office now. Uh, warrants are outstanding and we're, we're trying to locate the suspect in that case.
Not the, the baby one?
Uh-huh, yeah. So we have, we have two child homicide cases we're processing uh, in the office right now. And I will just report, we had, uh, a jury trial a, a month or so ago. It was the Ishmael Lopez case. It was the case where he had broken into his ex-girlfriend's home and assaulted his ex-girlfriend's mother while she was sleeping with a knife. And we, we convicted him of attempted aggravated murder. And so we felt, felt good about that. Got that case resolved. Uh, as far as things happening in the office, I will report that I have been in, in contact with Doug Thayer of Durham Jones and Pennaker. He is in the process of getting ready to file our opioid litigation complaint. Uh, that could be filed this week or next. I don't know if we want to, I, I talked to Dale a little bit about making an announcement on that. I think we were just gonna file it and see what happens. Um, but there may be some media coverage on that, that, and you may be asked some questions about that lawsuit. If you would like me to forward you a copy, I would be happy to do that. Uh, it is about a hundred and fifty-page complaint.
With a different group and then, then UAX or Public Health is trying to do another class action over, I mean, seemed like we got an awful splinter, didn't it?
Yeah, there's, there's gonna be, uh, different groups throughout the state. We have, with Durham Jones and Pennaker, there's, there's three or four counties. Davis County and I think Millard was with them. Do you think anybody else that was with, with DJP?
There was another one I can't remember.
I don't remember who Kane County tied in with, but it's not.
Yeah, there, there'll be some, some different groups that are moving forward with that. But anyway, just so that you know, you, you could get asked about that, that will be filed either this week or next. It is a substantial complaint.
So you're talking about press release? Is that release you wanna work out?
I can do something if you'd like me to.
It needs to come from you, not from us clown.
It can come from all of us if you'd like it to.
I think your office should take the lead on that and then if, whatever we can do to be of support.
Okay. All right, we'll, uh, we'll put that together then and announce that once it's filed. All right, um, I also want to report that, a- as you know, Commissioner Brinkerhoff, I think the justice court recertification process is well underway. I name you because I think the, the initial packet for recertification was sent to you. Um, I have provided my letter of compliance. And I think John got the resolution put together.
Yeah, the, the, uh, the commission passed it last time in the meeting. We kinda got maybe the cart a little bit ahead of the horse.
And, and so I think we're well on our way to recertification. I think Lori might report a little bit on that when, when she reports, but I think, um, my involvement and your involvement is probably satisfied in, in recertifying the justice court, which should happen, I think, early next year. Um, our office will be in the process shortly of, um, updating our PIMS software. That's our, our database, um, where we keep track of cases. This is an update that is being made available through the Utah Prosecution Council. That the money to, to fund this project was funded through the grant process, and so we won't have to pay any money for purchasing the software. We will have to pay a user fee per user each year and, and so we'll do that. But that'll be a substantial savings for the county. And, uh, it'll be nice to have some updated software in that regard. We were looking at purchasing some software a couple of years ago and, um, when UPC came up with this, uh, it allowed us to not have to, to purchase the software. That's gonna be a substantial savings to the county, so. That's my report unless, uh, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you guys do and have a nice day.
You as well. CJC.
I feel like I just saw you guys. Budget meeting.
Feel like it's continuous kinda.
I know. Um, so, not a lot has changed since last time that we met. Um, our fiber optics, um, is put in completely. We have all the new um, phones from the county as well as we're on, um, the servers, the county as well, which we're very gracious for. Um, so thank you so much. For getting that for us. That'll actually save, um, the Children's Justice Center about thirty-six hundred dollars a year. Um, now that we're at, on the county's phone lines and the county server, as well as that extra added protection, um, that we have, you know, considering that we are putting confidential information into case management systems, um, being on that county server actually helps add that, that extra added protection, um, for our cases as well. Um, so some of the things that we have coming up is we have our Dancing with the Stars, um, coming up on the fifth of November. It's a Monday evening at seven. Would love to invite all of you out um, for it. It's gonna be unbelievable. I mean, it, it's great every year, but this year it's gonna be really over the top. We've actually had, um, Scott Phillips, who approached us at the end of last year's show and was highly impressed and wanted to be a part of it and asked if he could actually be, um, part of the production of it. And so Scott is actually kinda just taking over all of the production and stage management of it. I mean, how do you say no to a Tony Award winner? Um, and then we have Fred Adams that has actually joined as well and he's been helping out with us. And so we've got Fred Adams, um, Mindy Benson, and Mayor Wilson are actually gonna be our judges this year. And then we've got a total of eight different, um, dancers as well. And so we've been just putting it out there. We expect another full house, um, like last year. And so we actually, uh, did a commercial. We worked with a gentleman, a SUU student by the name of Wyatt Larson, that put together a commercial for us. Super fun. Um, we're basing our show this year around, um, the Disney production of The Greatest Showman. So we've got quite a few actual um, live people who are actually gonna be singing, um, during the event as well. And so we actually put togeth- he put together this commercial for us, um, that is actually gonna be playing in all of the Larry H Miller megaplex theaters here, um, in Iron County. Um, up until the, it'll even run like three days after the event because that's just kinda the way that their, their reel goes. And so this will just be, uh, playing there and then we have it also on all social media, um, as well. So, do you wanna play it for us, John?
They won. Now they're running the show. Winners, Mike Blake and Tyler Allred. November fifth, Cedar City Heritage Center. Doors open at six-thirty. Children's Justice Center brings you Dancing with the Stars, the greatest show. Get your tickets now at Eventbrite.com.
So that's our thirty-second commercial. So, you know, it's thirty seconds, but it was like sixteen hours of actual time uh, that Wyatt Larson had put into this, and so we appreciate him. Um, Wyatt's also taking care of, um, at the beginning of the sh- like, even before each dancer dances, they have like a little interview with them where they go out and kinda watch them practice, and so they film that. And then they also film kind of like, you know, why um, are they interested in dancing for the Children's Justice Center? And so he's also working on that as well. And so we're super, super grateful for that, too.
And it's a bunch of silliness.
It is. It's-
But, but it's, uh, but, but last year, a- and I just wanna mention this. You know, last year, the bunch of silliness raised twenty thousand dollars for, for the Children's Justice Center. And it's, what is it? Is this the fifth year, fourth year?
It is.
Uh, each year incrementally, the, the sum of money raised each year has really gone up. Um...
I know that the dancers this year, um, have, have gotten together. And it's really interesting how this, um, whole fundraising has like really evolved over the years. And the best way for the dancers to be able to use those who in the community are coming out and sponsoring, um, dancers as well, because there's a part of it where, so every person who purchases a ticket that is at the show gets a vote. But, we also have a period in time before the final vote where you can go out and buy votes to try to promote your person that you want to win. And so I think that that's really just kinda strummed it up. And so this year, I know with Tom Braun, um, with Braun Construction, who actually had built our, um, um, our medical room for us and as well as our extra waiting room. He is one of our dancers this year and he has like created a website. He's created a way for people to go in and sponsor him. And, um, he sat, had a meeting with all of the dancers and their goal this year is forty thousand. So, we're pretty excited about it. Lots and lots of fun. The, um, lots of families are coming out because, I mean, their kids love The Greatest Showman. They love, you know, the soundtrack of it as well. And so we're pretty excited about it and kinda going with a whole circus theme. I know that, um, Scott Phillips has put a lot into it as well as Ben Batty. I mean, they have, I mean, Ben has put a lot, a lot of time and energy, um, into it. And so we just appreciate those in the community that come out and, and really step up and and wanna help just kinda take the lead and, in putting together our events. And we had a golf tournament, um, last month as well that Cyrus from the Pastry Pub, um, had sponsored for us. And Cyrus does a great job. He always ends up with, I think it's like, is it thirty-two teams? It's the max that you can have.
It's the max amount. I'm not sure how many teams.
The max amount that you can have, um, for golfing. And, um, so this is the second year in a row that Cyrus has done that for us as well. And so we're super appreciative of it. It really helps us. And especially for those things that perhaps maybe I don't have either state funding or, um, voca funding for. It's kind of interesting. You're not allowed to use state dollars for like anything that has to do with like the building of it, the bricks and mortar part of the center. And so it's really nice because that's where the Friends Board steps in to help us out with any needs that we have in that department as well, so. I'm trying to think of anything else. Um, we did interviews with the Sheriff's Department and Cedar City Police, um, and the HR Department in regards to filling the two victim advocate positions, um, for the Sheriff's Department as well. And so, um, excited to start, for our victim advocates to start working with them. Um, and then, of course, that grant goes until the end of June and then we'll apply in April again to extend that grant out from July one of twenty nineteen to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, twenty-one?
Two years.
It's a two-year grant.
The one-year grant's now a two-year grant.
Yeah, it'll go to a two-year grant. And we don't, um, expect any issues with that at all. If anything, um, I know that the, uh, grantors of that grant are thinking that, that two's not enough for Iron County, um, for a system-based advocate. That per our population, that we're probably looking at more like four, um, for Iron County. And so I've got the Chief of Police and the, um, Sheriff's Department, they're gonna be keeping track of if we're looking at possibly extending those two victim advocate positions to, to even more, so. Any questions at all? Thank you. We appreciate your guys' support. I hope to see all of you out for the Dancing with the Stars. It's a lot of fun. Family-friendly, so we'd love to have you guys out.
And just for the record, I, I'm willing to make an idiot of myself any night for, for that kind of fundraising effort, so.
People have a good time. It'll be fun.
It'll be fun. Thank you. Uh, IT. Come on down.
I'm the next contestant. I have to follow Stephanie?
Yep.
After that great report?
That's a tough act to follow.
Yeah, that's a, I might as well just sit down right now. After that one.
She kinda brought a feel-good message today, you know?
Yes. That was sweet. So that's a, that's a great cause. So, uh, why, why, John, I saw John an email and he's, he's quick. Spur the moment, he's getting everything up there. But uh, just a couple of the things is the budget. The budget looks really good. Unless you guys have any direct questions. I mean, everything on there, I'm really happy with. About the only thing that might be of concern if you look through it is we've done a, a combining of my internet network maintenance line item with the telephone line item, made it communications. So it shows a lot of access in internet and not very much in, in that communications one. But that will roll into it. Uh, Dan and I have been working on that one. So those numbers really don't change. It's just the way we started processing bills, so. That covers budget for you. No questions from me.
I don't have any questions budget-wise.
So the, the next one is a little bit about what's been taking place. Over the last quarter, you can see we're just under a thousand, uh, work orders that we completed. Um, our year-to-date, we're just up over three thousand. So we've been extremely busy. Um, those are just the, the tickets that come in on a day-to-day basis uh, that we accomplish. Those don't include our projects, which is what's the next thing. The, over the last three months, we've we've, uh, well, do the server one, the third one, I kinda got those out of order, but the up, we upgraded servers. So we upgraded all the Tyler software, which includes Eagle Recorder, Eagle Clerk, Eagle Treasurer, Incode Financials. There's, uh, several there. There's utility billing and accounts repay, uh, accounts receivable. We've upgraded all those, um, servers. In the process of doing that, too, we took the opportunity to go ahead and upgrade our, our routers and our switches, too. So they're not only new, but they're a lot faster. So we should be seeing a, a better communication in between the end user and the, and the server, so. So those were all, all big, big things. Took a lot of time. But we're, we're pretty excited that they're done and working better. Um, our current projects are, is, uh, is, uh, we went through at the fair and had the exhibit software. We're, we're in the process of we're actually gonna rewrite the whole thing with the new ideas of everything. And with, uh, with Dave being on board, he's good at programming. So we're gonna rewrite that for next year. Use a lot of the same ideas we had from this year, so it's not a complete rewrite, but it'll be working really well. Um, next week, we've got Tyler Content Manager, it's, uh, set up and, and training. And, uh, that, it'll work out really good. From what I'm told, it can, it can do all the scanning and everything that we need to do to get everything from paper. Who's in the training?
Who's included?
Um, right now, it's my, myself. And then I wanna get the assessor's office into it and then also the auditor's office. From there, we'll go out and my staff will train everybody else that needs to use it, so. So the big thing is, is I just want my crew in there for sure. And then we'll, we'll make sure we train and get everybody else going, so. But the assessor's office probably has the biggest need right now is they're going from paper to paperless and and it's kinda cumbersome right now. So we're hoping that this will speed things up for them. So, uh, we are, um, Cindy's working with Dave right now to update assessor page and information forums, everything else. So we're in that process. And then, of course, we got the MCAD that was recently signed and that. We're, we're in the process of, of moving forward on it. We've gotten with, uh, I can't remember the guy's name now, but we'll be working on that one and finishing it up. And then also the, the trail system. Mike Worthy and Ken, Ken Richards has been working with him on it. We've actually gone live with it now, so it's, there's a direct link right off the main website. And then that'll just be, uh, a thing in process, too. You know, as we go, we get more information, we'll just keep adding to it, so. So those are some of our bigger things and-
Did we get the photography and stuff done for the trail system?
Yeah, we decided, um, after talking with Mike, we decided to go a different route. What we, what we had initially designed was to have a picture on the, on the left side. You can click on it and go to a trail. Now, instead of doing that, instead of taking up all that room, we just created the full map and placed stars strategically. So then it'll allow for fewer photos and more appropriate photos, I believe. And then the load time and that. I like it. I think it looks, looks good, so.
Cool.
But yeah. Anything else?
Okay.
Are we signing on, bringing an office for you in the bottom of the public safety in that build-out?
Yeah, Lester talked, visited with me about that and we talked about having some down there.
So you're still on, you're still maintaining something in the jail?
Yeah, we still got a couple guys there. Um, the main reason why I haven't vacated the jail completely is 'cause all of our stuff's down there at the bottom. So that was, just made sense to be there, quick response.
We're having discussions on that build-out. See how that goes.
Yeah, yeah, Lester's been really good. He's been keeping me informed on it, so. Whatever works out, great. We're happy with, so.
Great.
Thanks, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer's office.
Well, Iron County did make the news, not in a good light. I did have KUTV call and interview me and they were calling. They said the ten counties that had the best economy at the time. And so when I saw the article and they had a list of all delinquent taxpayers through the state, and we had the number one highest delinquent tax. Bet you can't guess who. Yeah, so I wasn't sure that I loved, um, that we were number one on the hit list, but, um, Black Iron was number one, so. So anyway, um-
Never guessed.
Our office, we're, we're doing well. We have sent out tax bills. You've all probably received yours, so I'm sure you appreciated me as you open your tax bill.
Valentine comes early.
Yeah, so we were, we were ahead of schedule this year. It was great. Um, last year, we switched to this new printing company, company data center. Um, I sent the file, um, last Monday morning. They had me proofs by that afternoon and they were in the mail last Friday, so they've, they're awesome. Um, it was great. It was great to get them out early. That way, we give our taxpayers a little bit more time. And it also kinda gives us, so, instead of being crammed and it being so hectic, to spread that out a little bit for us, too, so it's helpful. Uh, the first report I gave is our product sales. Just shows what we have collected so far this year. Of course, our big collection will be in the next sixty days, so. So that will increase dramatically. Um, but we're, we're doing really good with our collections in spite of some. The second one is just what I have to report to you of what's been distributed directly to the county. So that is only what the county has received. And like I say, the next sixty days, that changes dramatically of what goes to the county. And then our pool cash report, we are still doing super good. Um, we are still at, you know, at thirty million in our accounts. And so we're s- we're doing real well with our cash. In our previous meeting, we're talking a little bit about interest. Interest rates are really great. I can't say really great, but from where they have been in years past, of course, they were a lot better, but that's really helped our, um, interest income. And so I'm glad to see that. I think l- last year, it- l- last year, our interest was about three hundred and seventy thousand, just in the one PTIF, and we're already at over four seventy, so. So that's really increased. It's gonna be great for us. Uh, outstanding taxes looks really terrible because, of course, we went from four million to uh, forty-six million, just because of taxes being taxed, uh, mailed out and billed out, so. So we hope that will change a lot in the next thirty to sixty days. So, uh, my budget is still super because, of course, all my big items hit from now till the end of the year, so unfortunately, that will change drastically, too, but. But we're doing really well. Um, we worked, of course, with Jared's Office and the Clerk's Office to help get that utility billing up on Inco Ten, and we're glad to see that happen, and if we can get Christine on Two Ten, that will get us all operating in the same system, so. We're hoping we can get that up and going. Um, Jared's Office has been great to work with us the last month. Of course, we always need extra help getting ready for tax time and getting extra printers and extra machines up and running, and so we appreciate him putting up with us a little bit. Um, but other than that, we're doing super. My gals that work in my office, they're awesome. We're always looking for better ways to do things, um, ways to save money. And so I, I really appreciate that. We're still working really hard on our return mail. Um, but they, they're such, such good workers and so appreciate them. There's not a lot of drama and they're, they just work hard, so. Any questions?
Last item on page three, fifty-five thousand eighty-nine of return checks. Those checks we're still trying to collect on?
Oh, yes, and that, that is just kind of at the, at the time. That's kind of a fluid number, so as we get them deposited back through the bank, that changes, so. So, yeah.
Are collectible, you think?
Oh, yeah. We, Melanie stays right on, on top of those and golly, I can't even tell the last time we've actually had to write anything off or we've, we've been able to. We haven't even had to bother Mike in a long time with any bad checks, so. So we do real well. We do good, so. They're good workers. You're welcome.
We appreciate it. Debbie, come on down. Well, Lori wants to go, sure. We'll take Lori.
Was inadvertently left off for our department.
Oh, shoot. I would've looked and stayed in my office. Sorry about that. Alan's not here today.
Good morning. On behalf of the Justice Court, I just wanna report that all is going really smooth. Um, just on a personal note, and I think I mentioned it to you during budget meetings, but Judge Miller did receive uh, really good news and feedback, and she's back in the office and working, um, hard and full-time and, and doing well, so. Thank you. Yeah, we're all grateful for that. Um, to the budget, we are, we are on target. Uh, Dan Jessen ran this for me just as of Friday. Uh, we had some things that we had needed to, uh, make sure got, uh, reallocated to the right, uh, budget line items, and at one point, we were paying for some of your training, Mr. Blake.
You were trained?
Yeah, so we moved that, so we moved that back over to you.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why.
No, it was just accidental. Um, anyway, so we feel good about that. Uh, if you have any questions on the budget, let me know, but basically, we're still at seven full-time clerks. Uh, myself is the administrator, the one full-time judge, and the one part-time judge. And again, that's through October nineteenth. Um, those figures. Regarding the recertification process that Scott Garrett mentioned, that has been mailed off. So, uh, the Ju- Judge Miller prepared the package, and thank you all for your, your help in that. And now we're just waiting for the AOC. But I would assume everything's fine. I think we're compliant where everything's concerned.
Great.
Um, the two sheets, well, oh, before I go on to these two reports that I have there, um, and I'll explain a little bit more about those, I just wanted to mention a thank you to IT because over the last few months, they, uh, we, we prepared a small claims page, uh, for the website. And now any individual that wants to file a small claims, all the forms are there, and it's pretty smooth. That way, they don't have to come by the office and pay for forms. They can download them from the website directly. And we've done the same thing with the expungement package for those that are looking to expunge any of their, um, you know, case records that, uh, you know, that qualify to do that. So, um, the two forms that you have here are printouts of our Justice Court Monthly Report, and I just thought it would be interesting to show you that there's a year-to-date, and it basically outlines all the charges that have been filed. And you can see that predominantly, the moving violations, uh, forty-five hundred. And then if you look at this other form side by side, it's the third quarter specifically. So it looks like in the third quarter, almost half of our numbers, um, so if you had forty-five hundred moving violations total, almost two thousand of those were recorded in the third quarter. So third quarter picked up quite a bit, and I guess I just wanted to, to show you that, let you know that we do have this information. If you have any questions, um, specific to moving violations, you've got eight hundred and twenty dismissed, and I think a lot of that would be accounted for by the fact that some of these are fix-it, some of these are com- people complied, and then you've also got the, uh, plea-in-abeyance, uh, traffic school. So a lot of those, once the people meet all the, uh, requirements of the probation on a plea-in-abeyance agreement, they, uh, they are dismissed. And I don't know if you have any specific questions. You can see that, uh, year-to, year-to-date, lot of, uh, you know, controlled substance narcotics, I think, five hundred and fifty-four. Anything that you see that gets dismissed in these categories, pretty much is because they will be pushed over to District Court if there's, you know, more than one charge. And then, if you wanna go into the actual, uh, figures, just like to point out that the total revenue collected, um, one point, almost one point five million. And then of that amount, uh, six hundred thousand almost, I'm rounding, um, is distributed to the different law enforcement agencies as well as the state. And then the amount that's retained by the county is number twenty-two, right at nine hundred thousand. And if you'd like, 'cause I haven't done this in the past, but I thought maybe it would be interesting on a quarterly basis for you to see these figures. You let me know.
I appreciate it. I, this is great information.
Lori, what, on that same page, what is the wave surcharge?
Uh, on the, where the number twenty-two is?
Yeah. Page four.
And you're asking about the security surcharge?
I just don't understand what the wave surcharge, eleven thousand dollars is.
You know what? Why don't you let me get back to you with a specific answer? I'll talk to Judge Miller about what that exact figure means.
There's that smaller amount of collected surcharge. I don't understand.
I am wondering if that is looking like that, you know, and don't quote me, I, I'm gonna look into it, but we had those restitution cases on our trust report that created a problem for us at audit time. And the reality of those figures was that because we went from, uh, Casell to Incode to Chorus, there was a glitch and the rea- what we've heard from the AOC is that they didn't write the program to pick up the fact that the money had come in, and I think it just got missed because of the transition from system to system. So they, they show that the money went out, and obviously, that didn't look good from a budget, you know, from a, you know, from an accounting standpoint. We've got money going out that we can't show came in. And so we've had to go in with the authorization and understanding from the AOC, and we've had to eliminate those restitution amounts, kinda zero them out. So I don't know if that's accounting for a wave in some of these fees, but I will find out for you. I don't know if I'm making sense, but.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that is all I have for you, unless you have any questions for me.
Oh, thank you. I really appreciate the fact that things are moving along and doing so well.
They are. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay.
Debbie, I can delay no more. Isn't, will this be your last report? Golly. Bells and whistles, something?
She's got tears in her eyes.
You know, I don't even have anything good to say, so that's too bad. I, I could dance on the table. When Robert Dally retired, that's the only request he had of our offices, that I danced on the table. But good, didn't it, John?
It was fantastic.
Thank you. And it was appropriate. I'll have you know, it was totally.
We still have tables.
Oh, oh, do you want me up? Anyway, our office is doing well. Well, it's tense. Let's put it that way. My office is tense, but we're doing okay. Uh, we'll all be really glad when Thursday is over, and I'm expecting you will all be there, correct? Um, so they will name the interim then, and then it'll be up to you to go ahead and, and approve that, uh, after that's done. But they have been very civil. They've been very cordial with each other, and I truly appreciate that immensely. To work in the same office and especially doing the same type of work, both trying to do the mapping and things, they, they have both been very, very dignified and very cordial with one another.
They're adult.
Yep, they've, they've done great, and I have so appreciated it.
They understand the nature of the beast.
Yep, I, I hope Friday will be as cordial. That's all I can say. But it, it's gonna be fine. It's gonna be fine. But I am excited. It's, it's, but I do need you to know, it has been a wonderful job, a wonderful job. I I couldn't have found a better place to work. If you have to work outside of the home as a mom, I am so grateful that I was able to work here, so I've appreciated it. Uh, my total documents are down just a tidge, but my transfer documents are up a bit. We've had a lot of sales, a lot of buys. We've had quite a few plat maps recorded the last quarter. And so things are still moving, but I am grateful they're doing it in a, in a good manner. The, the subdivisions have been more normal-sized, you know, just twenty lots, things like that, not the hundreds and, and things that have, were done in the past. But, um, things are moving along well. My notice of defaults are down to ten, and our trustee sales, we only had three in this last quarter, and so things are going along great. On our tender type, our revenue was up about three thousand dollars this last quarter. So things are going fine there, and my budget seems to be holding just fine. On my office supplies, I've still got quite a bit left in there, but I haven't bought the paper for the plat run, which will be done the end of, of this month. And so, but it looks like we're going to come in on budget and be just fine, just fine there. All right, now, see, I, I was under my ten minutes. Things are fine. Do you have any questions with me?
So did you, are all your documents scanned in now?
Yes. Yep. We've got, we've got a few of the old, 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 big, random books that are still not in there because we can't get them through our scanner. And I'm hoping that in time, we would like to get the church to come back, like they did a couple of years ago, and with their great big camera, and be able to shoot those for us. And they, they, they do it either for free, depending on if it falls within a year that the church is interested in, or it would be a minimal fee. And so I'm hoping in the next year, so Carrie, I know, has that kind of on her radar, and so does Bart, as far as going through and, and getting those books that will not fit in our scanner done, so. Anyway, so it's good, but other than that, everything's out there. It's on the, on the cloud. People from Cedar can get anything that I've got. The title companies hardly ever darken our door anymore, and so it, it goes really well. Goes good. We, we still have to record every single simplifile that comes through and, and things like that, so we just, but all, all it saves is bodies in my office, people coming and going, but our, our recording load is still the same. Things like that are, are still the same.
That was a good move.
It, it was. It was absolutely excellent. And even though it was hard to move to Cedar and, and think about doing that, it really forced us into making, making this transition that maybe would've taken us longer to, to do. It, it did. It's, it's lovely. Everyone is very, very pleased with the building. Get lots of good comments.
Better be, we're not gonna start over and do it again.
Exactly. And may I say, the yard's looking better, too. Yahoo.
It is.
I'm gonna love it. I, I didn't know how I would like the C-Rose scape, but I'm gonna really, really like it. It looks great. It's gonna look good.
John, we're still expecting saw, don't we?
Oh, yeah, although it's, uh, I think making a giant mud hole right there, right, right now, but I think if it weren't for the rain, he'd already be done.
Yep, but it, it does look good. Looks good. But thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Would you like to take your time, Mr. Nay? Are, are you, are you prepared to go, or since we're running, we're running ahead of schedule, we can get you out of here? Unless you're, you, you, you're, you're more than welcome to stay if you'd like, but if, if, if we can expedite your, uh, your business, then we would love to.
I'm Blaine Nay, the Iron County Bee Inspector. Uh, for the benefit of Commissioner Blake, I was appointed when Dave Miller was in your chair. Uh, the Utah Bee Inspection Act requires each county to appoint at least one inspector, go around and check the beehives in the, in the county, make sure they're healthy, and check for Africanization. Uh, so this is a report that I filed with the state this year. I've visited probably about half as many hives as I usually do this year. The, uh, the focus that the state wants us to have is to work with the new beekeepers, and the beekeepers are having troubles. Uh, the experienced beekeepers, we're not worried about. Uh, they know how to identify the diseases and, and problems and how to take care of them. So we're, we work primarily with the new people. And you'll see on the list, there, uh, some of them have visited multiple times this year because of problems they're having. Uh, the, the biggest problem we have with bee health now is, and for the last twenty years or so, has been related to a parasite imported from Asia. It's a mite, a little bit smaller than a pinhead. Uh, they're, uh, pretty devastating. They're a parasite, uh, that's part of the problem, but they vector at least fifty-seven viruses. And, uh, you'll see in, uh, let's see, the, uh, third from the left, uh, third from the right column, parasitic mite syndrome. Uh, that's where the, uh, the parasite load and, and virus load is so heavy that it's starting to be very obvious that the, the colony is not healthy. Um, so our, our objective is to control those mites, so they're not vectoring the diseases. And, uh, so I work with the beekeepers, figure out how to, how to control those, teach them how to count mites. We don't want more than six percent of the two percent of the bees, six, six bees per three hundred and a half cup of bees. Uh, no more than two percent infestation rate. You get above that, you start hitting this parasitic mite syndrome. The other problem that, uh, we The other problem that, uh, we have is, is bacterial diseases, uh, the worst is American foulbrood. That particular bacteria produces spores that are viable for at least forty years. Antibiotics will control the disease, but it does nothing to the, to the spores, so they'll, they'll be in the hive essentially forever. I identified, uh, one case this year, this would be the fifth case I've identified since I was appointed, and that, uh, that case of American foulbrood happened to be in my backyard, so I'm pretty proud of that. Yeah, that's, that's the correct treatment, this, the state allows us to, uh, to treat them with antibiotics, but the, the best treatment, and what I did with mine, was I just burned it. Close it up in a garbage bag, suffocate the bees, and then torch it. And, and you have to dig a pit, bury it, because you've got honey in there that's gonna protect spores in the honey from, from the heat. And so, we bury it, and hope that in forty years, it's all decomposed. We just, uh, keep the mice from being out of control. And up north, uh, the, the big counties, they've, they've had cases where it's twenty, twenty-five percent infestation rate, and. Yeah, we, the, uh, the best test is put a half a cup of bees in a, in a quart jar, add a little bit of alcohol, a couple of cups of alcohol. Yeah, and, uh, and then you, you agitate it, the, uh, mites are knocked off, you strain it, and then you count the mites. Uh, we can also use powdered sugar, it's not fatal to the bees, but, uh, it's not as good a test. So, when I'm counting bees, uh, for the people I visit, I use the powdered sugar method. It's not as good, but if I kill their bees, they probably won't invite me back, so. Uh, but, uh, you think about it, you're killing three hundred bees to save the lives of thirty thousand. So, it's, it's a, it's a good sacrifice, and that's what I do with my own bees, so I, I sacrifice a few. We have some good treatments for, uh, controlling the mites. Couple of them are typical acaricides that you use on fleas and ticks and so on for livestock and pets. Uh, of course, those are poisons, and we try not to use those unless it's really necessary. Uh, there are other things, we, we use, uh, oxalic acid, which is wood bleach. If applied right, that's good for the bees and bad for the mites. And oxalic acid, the other acid is formic acid, they're naturally in the hive anyway, we just increase the levels to where it's fatal to the mites. And those two treatments are safe for applying when you're harvesting food. It's safe for human food, the acaricides are not, so you have to apply those when you're not collecting honey for harvest.
Have you seen a decrease in the number of hives?
Yeah, uh, nationwide, we have about half as many as we did twenty years ago. So, it's, uh, we're, we're struggling. Yeah, the big problem is pollination. They, we, we, it's about ten million hives each year move to Southern California for the almond bloom, and that taps out, the, that's, that's all there is for commercial beekeepers. Used to have twice that many. But, uh, if we keep losing bees like we've been doing, uh, that's gonna affect our apples. So, it's, it's a problem, and we, we, that's my job, is kind of keep that under control in Iron County. Any other questions?
So, are you compensated, any?
Yes, I get mileage, you, you guys insisted I do that. You, you'll see one, uh, one case where I went to New Harmony, and the state takes care of that when I leave the county. Last year, I went to, uh, Kane County a couple of times. That's what I've heard.
Well, I had no idea we had a beekeeper. I had no idea, I thought the bees just flew around, and I, I appreciate the education.
Uh, and I, I get calls, uh, it's usually the extension office, quite often, the, uh, the, the sheriff's dispatcher will send people to me that have bees in their house, um, live in their ees or something like that, so I, I go help them with that. I, uh, I don't charge the, the county mileage for that because I get free bees out of it. And I get to tear somebody's house apart.
I always wondered what happened to those bees, so that you, you, you put them to work?
Yeah, I've, I have ten hives in my backyard, uh, that's, that's more than I should have. The, uh, there's not enough forage in the area to, uh, to sa- sustain that many colonies, but.
But if somebody gets a, an infestation in their house, they're, they're not just necessarily cold then, huh?
I, I just go cut them out of the house and, uh, put them in a hive. I, I run a four H beekeeping club, and if it's, uh, a case where it'd be safe to take the kids, I'll have them help me cut the, uh, the bees and the comb out of the house, and, uh, they get to keep the bees.
That's great.
It's a good experience for them. Have a lot of fun doing it.
I, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, I just presumed they were cold.
Well, and, and you talk to the, uh, pesticide applicators, they, they're very reluctant to spray the bees. They don't mind killing yellow jackets, and I don't either, but they're reluctant to spray the bees.
So, I was amused going across the desert towards Quartzside and see all these bee things and nothing chaparral. What in the hell do they get honey out of chaparral?
Well, you have mosquito out there too, that's a good, uh, honey. Uh, there, there are, there are a lot of desert blossoms out there that they, they can find.
I see bees in rabbit brush.
Yep, yeah, they love that stuff, it's lots, that's the last honey flow for the year. Pack in the last little bit of honey and pollen for the winter. Kind of strong tasting, but, uh, the bees like it.
If you could find some way to have them kill the damn bush owner there and be.
No, we beekeepers don't want that.
We, we ranchers do.
Yeah, I understand.
We'll, we'll buy bees if you'll pay him thanks for what you do.
Thank you for the education, we appreciate it. Like I said, you are more than welcome to stay. All right, uh, that concludes the nine o'clock reports. Uh, we'll take a break just for a minute, make sure that we're all up and going and ready for the ten o'clock portion of the meeting, we'll be back in just a few minutes.
Well, it's, most of Utah is, uh, not great for honey anyway. I grew up in Brigham City, and the fruit orchards out there, and in the summer, they'd be out in the bee fields. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's mild honey, people like it, it doesn't granulate readily, yeah. And really, in the colder, you got the locusts, you got lots of those around here in Parow, and that's great honey. Yeah, yeah, the summer bees only live four months.
Oh, yes. It's currently quality quality. So, that was just commissioned. They're, they're, they're pretty involved, so. It seems like my uncle was just ten, now he's almost twenty. Over that ten years, that, it's pretty goofy.
Well, my wife's bringing up the average, she, she's, she likes the flowers. But, uh, huh, that's interesting. Well, I will, I will forbear that, and, cause I, in the past, I, I usually like to pick my weeds, but I haven't tried to do it, so.
Right now, they are.
Today, they're fine so far. Then, uh, we're back on the budget, we've been, we've been doing budget for the last couple of weeks, it's been brutal. That, that's almost over.
Forget, see, we do ours in the city, February, March, April.
Yeah, yeah, ours ends up in October, October, first of November, then we kind of cruise through the end of the year, kind of try and get everything in place. Go through October and a little bit of November. Got the, I'm gonna be on that, uh, make-o call this week. Or do you care?
Not following it, but Brad's been kind of running it, so. I don't remember if that was on, Brad was all like tomorrow and talks to me on Thursday.
Brad just told me I'm not gonna be there, so it's, it's all yours.
Oh, yeah, Brad told me that.
When, I think it's Wednesday. I've gotta go back and look through all the emails, I'm supposed to have input from everybody for.
This is that follow-up with, with the group, right?
Yeah, this is the follow-up.
I'll let you know if I'm there or not, I'll have to go back and look at it, see.
If I choke, I'm gonna be like, hey daddy.
I, I got to this weekend, and I just, I, I took my phone off and.
We were home this weekend, we, it's been probably, it's been four or five weeks since we've been home on a weekend, and we're gone at least the next two. Gotta slow down at some point. We've gotta go to Tucson this weekend and back, and then we're gonna go to LA the next weekend for funerals. My wife's family's weird, they die, and then they have the funeral months later, I don't know why, I just. So, she had an uncle die in March, the funerals this weekend in Tucson. I'm not sure what the delay on that was, maybe her cousin passed away about four, eight weeks ago. And that funeral's the next weekend, but that one, they did a GoFundMe, there was beer money.
You might as well be people happy to be there, especially if you have to drive to LA.
Legitimately, it was like, we need beer money, so we're gonna postpone the memorial until we have a GoFundMe for a month.
How's the GoFundMe doing?
For a couple of kegs and, uh, six-foot Subway sandwiches.
Wouldn't you rather see people happy? Yeah, rather than just happy you're gone. Come on, there's a better sandwich place.
They said we raised enough money for beer on Subway if everybody else could bring a side dish.
So, you make some potato salad, you throw it out the back window. Knock a few more people out a week later.
Cousins stopped through here the other day, we're, we're in budget, he's from Colorado, and he used to just taste like it's been wild. But they, uh, they stopped through, and they were on their way to go visit grandkids now, a more wild. They said that since that, since Colorado got its marijuana, they have, you know, they travel all over the country, since we get pulled over ten times more than we ever should, because of our Colorado plates. Everywhere we go, we over, get pulled over. My, my cousin, he retired from the military, and he was, he ran the air traffic controller program at the Air Force Academy. He retired from that, and he came back as a private contractor, and then retired from that. He's a pretty straight-laced guy, they get pulled over, as soon as they figure out, as soon as they get up and figure out, take one look, I'm gonna pick one up, go. There's no weed on board here, but.
What do you think about the recreational, it's for a law enforcement, what do you think about it? Is it good, bad, otherwise, overblown, more of an issue than people make it out to be?
Um, I, recreational, I, I think it's kind of overblown, I, I think it's, I, I would hate to see recreational usage because of the impairment issue. And it's stopped a lot of people over the years smoking weed, and they're just as impaired as if you break a law. That's, that's my main concern, that and, and just the effects that it has on kids whose brains are developed. You see, you see those generational pot smokers, and there's a, there really is a big difference. I, I got into, you know, before I left law enforcement, I was dealing with third generation, you know, I dealt with grandma, then I dealt with dad, and I started to deal with kids.
Let's get it done.
I think we're waiting on John to print. There was an error in something in John's reprinting. I think he'll be back any moment.
John's printing some resolutions that apparently didn't make it in your packets.
Yes.
So we're not meeting today. I'm gonna have to check down and see if he's back. No. So, it must have been the conflict was Dale and that freed up, cause it was like later on it was gonna be bad, but. Okay. I'm just gonna find out when I was back, and we'll just, Wednesday here.
Cause I, we talked about tomorrow, and we said, oh, let's just do it Monday while we're already there.
The reason we can't do it tomorrow is somebody hits up on Wednesday.
Yes.
I think it was.
Having that in the part, I don't intend to.
I have stuff Wednesday, but it wasn't anything that I couldn't move, I remember, so Tuesday was better than Friday.
Never coming out.
Adrian won't have the stuff to me, and then I gotta crunch stuff once he gives it to me, so I'm thinking Wednesday, Thursday will be best. So, I. Yeah. So what did, so we're not making any decisions on? Not making any dollar decisions today. All right, what about? That's still.
It is, it is.
So right today, all, all the agenda today is creating a project area. All the, the internal officers, we talked about that this morning. Danny, Danny and John talked about the commission, see what their feelings are on it. Good, that, so I'm happy to talk you through it if you would. Keep me calm. Cindy has a good handle on it.
We can write in, Bruce can write in with us.
Decided that yet, but that I assume is the last couple of meetings. Just for the sake of doing what we're thinking about. We'll have a few grenades thrown when we do that, and you'll see. We're reacting.
Wednesday, all I got, I have a conference call of ten, that have to be on, cause. It's a thing, I'm, I'm leading it.
Because conference calls, what, what is it, morning, afternoon, all the?
It's ten, and it's, it's, I don't think it's more than that.
So we could do afternoon.
We could do afternoon on Wednesday, or just, I, I've just got ten to eleven. It's, it's the may go, place making, and it's the, it's the follow ups of all of the groups nationwide will be on the call.
And you're leading it.
Well, just our portion.
Oh, I gotcha, I gotcha.
I have to speak for Irons County, we usually make Brad speak, but he said he's not available.
Hey, you should just give, what's his name, from Cedar High, not, not him, he, he'd go on crazy. Sure he'd be happy.
He would be happy, that's. Well, yeah, that's kinda why, like, Brad's like, I'm not available, my. Before anybody else, I guess, well.
Oh, goodness.
Yeah, so Wednesday afternoons, Thursday got one at thirty to two thirty.
So Wednesday afternoon, Thursday, and that way.
Yeah.
Can you have a, a text down?
Yes.
Yeah, we can talk through, we can talk through this whole.
So, yeah.
Get everybody together again.
And Friday, I'm headed to Tucson on Friday. Yes. Keep peace and famine.
We back in business? Excellent.
It's kinda straightened out. Okay, so, we're gonna do, actually, those are in the, so there's the one. Project J.
Let's go, how to do that. Good.
Resolution two. Resolution three, and there's, there's actually two points, so it'll be in this order, two, change to three.
Okay. Great.
Yeah. I'll talk to the, the changes, maybe if we meet, I'll come and talk to you. Let me introduce it.
Oh, it actually says, shorten the commission presentation.
Excellent. Excellent.
Isn't it? Budget, but then you wouldn't even talk about.
So, whatever that is, it.
Small miracles.
Yeah. Huge.
All right, uh, we're back in session for a ten o'clock portion of our meeting. Uh, apologize for the delay, that took a little bit longer, but we did have some, some clerical things to take care of that greatly shortened our time by taking care of it right up front. So, ten o'clock, uh, item number one is our public comment portion of the meeting. Uh, just to remind folks, as usual, that we have a three minute time leader, excuse me, a three minute time limit per speaker for public comment. Uh, should not repeat others' comments, only items not on the agenda, and no items related to the commission's role as an appeal board. Uh, comments should be directed at the commission, and no attacks on other people's character, which we generally don't have a problem with, we have a good group, so. Eh, uh, open the floor for public comments. Seeing none, we will, uh, move on to agenda item number two. Uh, for agenda item number two, uh, we're going to step out of our role as the county commission and convene as the Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency. We do have, uh, item number two, we do have a public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing, uh, and this is gonna be on the draft project area plan and draft project area budget for Fiddler's Canyon Solar Community Reinvestment Project Area. There's actually several items. On the agenda for public hearing, uh, is it gonna be easier just to take those kinda one at a time and explain those, or? What's the easiest way to do that?
Maybe if I can just kind of introduce.
Perfect.
Full, the full range of options on the table today.
Fantastic.
I'm Adam Long, I'm legal counsel for the redevelopment agency, as, as, uh. You sit as the redevelopment agency board, you basically take off your county commission hat, put on your redevelopment agency board hat. The agency is a, a separate legal entity, even though we're in the same room, uh, what we have on the agency agenda today, we have a public hearing on a draft project area plan and a draft project area budget. For a community reinvestment project area that we're tentatively calling the Fiddler's Canyon Solar CRA. Uh, this is, uh, a project area, and when I say project area, this is essentially a delineation on the map where the redevelopment agency can exercise its statutory powers. Uh, this is a project area for three, roughly three megawatt each solar projects. The project area plan and the project area budget, uh, set out the agency's analysis and expectations for how this project area will work, how it will benefit the county and its residents. Touches on a number of other statutory points, uh, deals with the how, what, where, and why. Uh, those have been made publicly available, we've sent the required notices for this hearing, published the required notice in the paper. So after the public hearing, uh, during the public hearing, the board will take any public comment, there may be, and the, the items on the agenda for the redevelopment agency are a resolution approving the project area plan. Albeit an oversimplification, approving the project area plan is basically saying, okay, this, this area on the map is where the agency can exercise its statutory powers. And also the project area budget, which, uh, at the risk of confusing our nomenclature, a project area budget here is different from a, you know, the county's budget, in that this is really just a set of financial projections. Uh, what, what we think the impact of the project area will be, obviously, reality is not usually as we expect, so these, the budget is non-binding. Uh, doesn't obligate any money to flow to the agency from the agency or otherwise. Those monetary decisions will be done as a next step in the process via inter-local agreements between the agency and the other taxing entities, so. County, school district, water conservancy district, uh, but those negotiations are, are ongoing, but will be finalized in another agency meeting. With that, I suggest the board take any other public comment, uh, if none, I'd be happy to come back up and walk through the rest of the process.
Thank you. The chair decla- declares public hearing open on, uh, items number two through number five. Any public comments? Seeing none, uh, invite Mr. Long back up for the specifics.
Yeah, as a procedural matter, I suggest formally closing the public hearing.
Sorry, uh, chair declares this public hearing formally closed.
So item number three on the agenda is discussion and possible action on the resolution approving the project area plan. Board members have that document in front of you, the project area plan is, is very similar to the other plans we've done for solar projects in the county. Again, this is basically creating the, creating the geographic area where the agency can, can exercise its powers.
So we're back in commission meeting?
Uh, we're still, still convening as the agency board.
So this is, we're, uh, covering item number, or, excuse me, item number three.
And then we'll do, uh. So agenda, item number three. Discussion, possible action on agency's resolution two thousand eighteen dash two. A resolution approving the project area plan for the Fiddler's Canyon Solar Community Reinvestment Project. So that is a motion to approve that.
I will second.
Project area.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion for a discussion item number three carries, we'll move on to item number four.
Item number four is, is a similar resolution approving the project area budget, the budget, like the plan, is a, a document created according to statutory requirements. Uh, again, it basically sets out the financial expectations we expect from the project area, the type of development we expect to see, the type of tax revenue it will generate. What portion the agency may receive, as I noted previously, those final decisions have not been made, those will be done via inter-local agreements, which will be approved in a separate agency meeting, and also be approved at the. Meetings of the governing boards for the various taxing entities, uh, the budget currently contemplates an incentive of fifty percent for ten years, uh, starting with twenty nineteen. But as I said, at this point, the budget is simply a set of projections, not binding.
So the motion is to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash three, approving the solar area budget for the Fiddler's Canyon Solar Community Reinvestment Project Area.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is approved as well, so. Turn the time over to Danny Stewart for presentation and possible approval of two thousand seventeen incentive payments for Burrell Solar, Buckhorn Solar, and Cedar Valley Solar Projects.
Thank you, commissioners, this, uh, item of business goes back to last year's tax year for the, uh, incentive which is in place for these three, three megawatt, uh, plants, the, uh. Burrell Solar, Buckhorn Solar, and, and Cedar Valley Solar. As per our agreement with each of these, uh, projects, uh, there are certain criteria that they have to meet, um, they have met these criteria, which are. That, well, number one is that the, uh, agency is entitled to receive tax increment, and, and the agency was entitled to receive that, and actually did receive that. The other points on, on our agreement is the continued operation of the facility, payment of real property and ad valorem taxes, and the request for the tax increment share. Um, and that that was to be done by April first, a- all these, uh, criteria were met. We, as an agency, uh, went back and asked for some more detailed information, uh, just as a point of standardizing the information that we're collecting on each of these, uh, tax incentives. This is the first time for some of these, uh, projects, and we're just wanting to standardize as they come in over the next, uh, ten to fifteen years that we have, uh, accurate records. So, the request that I have today is that, uh, that we approve this payment, that this, these companies or these, uh, projects did meet all the requirements. And that they, uh, even though it's late in the year, the, the reason for that lateness is because we request additional information, just so that these. Uh, documents would match what we're receiving from the other.
And you said additional information, Rudy, do you mean? Additional over what they submitted and not additional after, beyond the contract?
Right, just a- additional to what they had, uh, submitted by April the first, they had submitted information that demonstrated that, uh, they were fully operational. Um, we just asked them to submit monthly, uh, invoices.
But this information expected in the contract originally.
Um, it, it wasn't made clear, we just asked in the contract that they submit, uh, documentation that shows that they were operational for the, for the time.
This was, um, this was how we asked them to prove that they were operational, so.
Well, my point is it's not necessarily additional information.
Oh, right, it's more clarified information, yeah, it's clarification.
We expected to begin with, it wasn't something we imposed after the fact, upon them.
Yeah, that's correct, it was for clarification sake and for our own record keeping sake as an agency. So, that's really what we have, everything else, everything has been met, and, uh, moving forward, we've been able to standardize this for all of these projects, and. We will remind all of these, uh, entities, as we move into the new year, how these things have been standardized, so that these can be completed earlier in the, in the next coming years.
So, Mr. Chairman, the motion for number five is to approve the agenda, number five is to approve in two thousand seventeen incentive payments for Boulder, Burrell. Solar, Buckhorns, Buckhorn Solar and Cedar Valley Solar Project.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is approved, thank you for your time. Uh, at this point, we'll adjourn as the Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency and reconvene as the Iron County Commission. Which brings us to number, agenda item number six, which is discussion and possible action of ordinance two thousand eighteen dash five. It's an ordinance approving and adopting the official project area plan for Fiddler's Canyon Solar Community Reinvestment Project Area. Good, Mr. Long.
This is a very simple one, uh, item number three on the agenda was the agency's approval of the project area plan, this is simply the county's approval of that same document.
Call for motion on number six.
Agenda item number six, approve ordinance two thousand eighteen dash five, an ordinance approving and adopting the official project area plan for the Fiddler's Canyon Solar Community Reinvestment Project Area.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved. Item number seven, uh, request a donation for the Senior Companion and Foster Grandparent Program, uh, requested by Joanne Lyman, representing a senior companion and foster grandparents. Thank you.
He said his was simple, mine's way simpler. Just take a minute, um, so you, you both know a bit about my program, so this is just a little update for you. Iron County currently has seven senior companions and eleven foster grandparents, so senior companions go to the homes of other seniors and take them shopping and to doctor's appointments. All of my volunteers are lower income. Um, some of them are just on social security, but they have to make less than two thousand dollars a month to be on the program. Most of them are about a thousand to twelve hundred dollars a month. So foster grandparents go to the schools and help the kids with their reading, and you can see the, the numbers there. Senior companions serve thirty-three clients in Iron County. And that's about a little over five thousand hours per year. And transporting them almost twenty-eight thousand miles per year. So that's quite a bit of transportation. Especially for, I mean, we kind of get a lot of our transportation from bringing clients from Perwin to Cedar for doctor's appointments and things like that. Even ENIC, that kind of gives us a little mileage. Um, foster grandparents served eighty-six hundred hours per last year or per year. And we reimburse them for mileage from their homes to, um, school. And we have one volunteer that lives in New Harmony. And she, there's not a school in New Harmony, so she drives to Cedar, so she gets a little extra mile, so that's why that's a little bit high. So, um, our volunteers each earn two dollars and sixty-five cents an hour. Um, that's compensation for volunteering. They also get two dollars and twenty-five cents for meal allowance. And that's if they work, excuse me, four hours a day. They have to work at least four hours a day to get the two twenty-five for a meal. And then they get thirty-five cents a mile for, um, transporting. They have to all work at least fifteen hours a week. Most of mine do about twenty to twenty-five hours a week. So that's pretty good for a senior. My average age is about seventy-two years old for a volunteer.
And what did we approve last year, Joanie?
Last year you gave us five hundred dollars.
Whopping five hundred?
Yeah, but you can do more. Be happy with that. But five hundred's great too. So just to remind you, we do have to have community involvement in our program to show that we are liked by our communities, so we have to earn... I have to raise about ten thousand dollars a year to match our federal program.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest that we just leave this as a budget item to be considered within the budget and act on it at that time.
Okay.
As we, as we put together the final budget, we consider this a request. And give that to Dan to, to be part of his presentation.
Did you hear that, Dan? Okay, well...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Very much. We took care of item number eight earlier. Uh, number nine, discussion approval of resolution two thousand eighteen dash eleven, establishing an audit committee to assist the Iron County Board of Commissioners in the oversight of both internal and external audit functions.
Okay, so this is really just, um, housekeeping. We, we, we approved the audit committee. Um, but we didn't do it by resolution, so this is a resolution to go ahead and establish it and the charter of the audit committee. We, we approved it in a prior commission meeting, and then as we got looking at it, we realized there was no resolution and that was, that was needed or required, so.
I, uh, I took your document and turned it into a resolution, but I, it occurs to me, I didn't give you a chance to review that. I...
Well, all you did was...
Included all your language.
Yeah, the language is good. You just, you just made it, you re- revolutionized it.
I think that's a verb.
Great minds, man, I'll tell you what. So no, I'm good, I'm good. As long as you didn't go tweaking the, you know, adding, you know, requirements that I have to show up with a bag over my head or anything like that.
It was a bit about a tutu.
Okay, a tutu I'm okay with.
So Dan, this has no budget implications?
No.
Then I move the approval of resolution two thousand eighteen dash eleven, establishing an audit committee to assist with the county functions.
I will second that. All approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mixing up my language, getting ahead of myself.
Thank you.
Item number ten is notice of annexation of parcel into Cedar City for Mark Meisner Judd, uh, located in the south half of section thirty-two, township thirty-five, south, range eleven west, Salt Lake Basin, Meridian, Cedar City, Utah. This is, uh, requested, presented by Arlo Fossen with Go Civil Engineer.
It doesn't look like Arlo's here.
Didn't see Arlo come in.
This was a carryover from the last meeting.
Right. Okay.
So that simply requires concurrents on the part of the county?
Yeah, it's just notice. It, you don't, they, they have to notify you, but you don't get a say in it.
Okay.
There was the new law, well, it was new in two thousand fifteen where, uh, that Westwood, the bill filed that Westwood ran that allows for the annexation of an island or a peninsula. And in that case, the county has to buy in, but that's not what's going on.
Why don't we simply notice that it's been passed through the, passed through the commission and, uh, we state no objection? Take care of it?
Yeah, instead of keep bringing it back?
Yeah, I, I think we've been noticed.
Okay.
Okay, which brings us to personnel.
Then why don't we go ahead and take care of the issue and get it done? We, I don't suppose we need him to make a presentation?
Yeah, and I, uh, I, I think, in fact, they were, they wanted me to, but you, yeah, you don't need me to even do it, so.
Okay, uh, well, I, I'll go ahead and just read the, uh, the personnel, I believe. Let's see. Yeah, these are all, well, these are all, uh, Sheriff's Department items. Uh, item number one is approval of new hire Devon Kwiatkowski as a patrol deputy. Uh, this date, uh, effective date is October twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen. This is a backfill of a base, of a vacant position and not a new position. Uh, the second is approval of new hire Michael Ferguson as patrol deputy. Uh, effective date, October twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, and this is also a backfill of, backfill of a vacant position. Uh, the next is a promotion for Thomas Byrd, uh, promoted from deputy to corporal. Uh, the effective date is October twenty-first, twenty eighteen, and this is also a backfill of a vacant position. Uh, approval of a new hire, uh, Shelby McDonald as part-time bailiff. Effective date, uh, October twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, and this is a backfill of a vacant position in the bailiff division. Uh, then the next one is approval of a new hire, Breonna Garrett as victim advocate, coordinator, and the grant specialist. Uh, effective date eleven-four of twenty eighteen. Uh, this position is, goes along, uh, with the Voca grant from the Children's Justice Center. Uh, this person will, uh, coordinate those victim advocate positions and also manage that grant.
It is a new position.
That is a new position, and this...
It is, as you mentioned, partially or totally funded through CJC.
Yes.
Grant program.
This position was requested, uh, required basically through the, uh, office of the Attorney General to fit the guidelines of that Voca grant.
And I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So those motions are approved for those personnel issues? Yes, that last position, uh, add to that motion, approval of a new hire is contingent on that Voca, continuation of that Voca grant. Uh... B is discussion approval of two thousand nineteen employee insurance benefits.
So, uh, Mr. Keller, uh, let's, uh, Krell is here from AJC. I think he's just out in the...
Why don't we?
I don't see Adrian.
Why don't we have a discussion with Lester while we're waiting for? Or Brendan?
I'll come up and do a song and a dance while you're waiting.
Okay.
You're gonna have to join me, John. As you, as you can see, the landscaping is coming right along. They got most of the, the vegetation in last Friday. We have a little bit of, uh, piping to finish up on it. Um, then they will, depending on weather, their goal is this week actually to have the landscaping finished. Uh, but...
The rock too?
The rock as well. They'll come in and they'll sling the rock out. And then they will come in, then they will, after the rock is done, they'll put the sod in.
Is the rock over fabric or?
Yeah, there, there's a, that's a nice heavy-duty fabric. You can kind of see it back here where it's sticking out on the, um, platform.
Done some things out back?
Yeah, the rock is actually, most of the rock is done in the back of the building. Um, cause we didn't, we didn't put any vegetation, uh, pretty much, uh, west of the little walkway going to the, towards the bank. We didn't put any plants or anything back in there, so.
How late can they lay sod and expect it to knead down?
It will just, e- e- even if it doesn't, even if it goes dormant, it will just sit there and go dormant and then go down in the spring, so he...
But we wouldn't want it laid over frozen, frozen ground.
Yeah, like I said, he, his, his goal is to get that in this week, so we'll have enough warm days at that.
You won't have sprinkling for a day or two.
Yeah, that's, that's the nice thing, is it will sit there and get water through the winter and...
What about the sign?
The, the sign, um, we don't quite know the schedule on the sign. Um, uh, we're waiting for the, the guy that's doing the block to finish up another job, and then he'll hit ours. We're anticipating one or two days doing the sign, and then we just sent the, um, uh, agreement and down payment for Rainbow Sign's portion of the sign.
So who pulls the circuit in?
What's that?
Who, who provides the circuit for the light?
Uh, it was part of the contract, um, uh, it, it's going through, um, MJ, MJ's, but it's a Elliott Warren, Warren that's the electrician doing the work.
Includes the, the light on the flagpole?
Yeah, what we're doing is instead of putting a second, or, or light just at the base of the flagpole, we're actually gonna put a, a light on the back of the sign and shine it back at the building at the light, or at the flagpole. That way, we only have to have one set of lights. Yeah, it, so we'll have three lights on the sign, one will, two will be shining on the, on the sign, and one will be shining on the flag.
Do you have a contract with Rainbow already?
Yep, that's already done and taken care of.
They're probably way ahead of the base.
So, and then, um, you guys talked with them and we approved the, uh, uh, fencing and the gate with, with privacy slats.
That'll be nice.
So.
And we haven't talked about some pavilion money in next year's budget, have we, Dan?
I thought we, we put up... There was some in there.
From, from Lester, from, from Chad, and it's on for our discussion.
Yeah, it was on, on budget for next year, so.
And then I ask you, what our warranty is on landscape?
It'll be a year. Um, and we are going to send out for, um, bid before the end of the year to, on re-landscaping bids for maintenance anyways. And, um, the landscaper is, who's putting in is interested in, um, getting that contract as well, so.
So he was, he's aware of any settlement issues on the?
Yeah, any settlement he'll have to take care of, any pipe breakage. And the sa- same thing at the Public Safety Building. Um, MacArthur's actually coming in and shutting it off, and they'll turn it back on next spring as part of the, uh, original contract, so.
So sometime as part of the budget process, we'll need to have a little discussion about public safety basement?
Yeah, and we put some money on our number towards that as well.
Move on or whatever it is we do. Lester, thanks for the extra, how much you bet, what, uh, how much you projecting for a pavilion out on the slab?
Um...
Fifteen?
That was, I thought, I don't know, fifteen to twenty, I think is what, I, the number I gave Chad, but I don't know what he turned into Dan.
Expect at least twenty, I mean, eighteen.
I would expect at least tw- yeah, so. Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Adrian's about four or five minutes out, so we're working on the presentation. We can have our vice Republican Party Chair tell us about the Central Committee meeting.
Okay, who is it?
Put you on the squad. Tell us about Thursday.
So we'll just be, uh, letting a new recorder. Uh, the, uh, Executive Committee Chair Andrew Young will design the factings. The Secretary of Consensus, so we might adjust that, I don't know. Yeah, move the factings. They'll put you into the chair position, which I don't want. Don't have to, I can do it. I don't know if we kept it that on here.
It's bumping stage, right? Bump is stage?
Yeah, yeah, about four times.
Okay, well, we'll, uh, if Adrian's almost here, we'll just wait with bated breath. Uh...
I don't know.
I don't know how to explain it. Uh, like we... Do... Okay, great.
So, uh, courthouse again. So we talked about, um, it was directed to put in the budget to do, to finish some of the artwork up, up here. Let me just give you an update on that. So I talked to Maria, I talked to Rainbow Sign, and, um, what we, what we thought about doing, um, was do something similar to some of the panels that they did downstairs, only not doing very many, just doing about five of them. Would be four down this hallway and then one down the, down the other hall on the way to the fair. Uh, do a similar, um, similar style and design instead of only, instead of doing kind of a vertical or a, or a portrait. Um, switch and do more of a horizontal or a landscape, just cause the hall's kind of narrow. You can't really step back like you can downstairs, and just do them on one side of the wall again because of the narrow hall. Um, and we, we talked about doing some of the, um, putting a spotlight on some of the county that we didn't do downstairs. Um, some of the things that were thought of was, uh, we didn't do anything with ENIC City. So we thought maybe they could do something with ENIC City and, and the, and the, uh, uh, maybe the Spanish Trail or something that goes right through there, or Johnson Ford or something like that. Um, for one of them, uh, we talked about doing, um, let's see, ENIC City, doing something about the west, out in the west desert, if there's anything kind of cool, historical. Um, with Burl Newcastle, um, area, and on, in the, in the, in the hall on the way to the fair, actually doing one that had specifically was about the fair. There's one panel downstairs that has to do with Perwin, and it has a picture, it mentioned something about the fair, but, um, there's some, a lot of really good fair stuff with some good pictures that maybe that they could do something there. And then there was, there was a couple of other ideas, maybe focusing on, um, Three Peaks or the other recreation area, Woods Ranch. So if you had any other ideas or wanted to tweak that, it seems like I'm forgetting one, but, um, that's, that's our plan. Um, so if you had any other ideas or wanted to tweak that, it seems like I'm forgetting one, but, um, that's, that's our plan. Was there nothing else for Paragona? I'm not gonna lie, I mean, if we were including Washington County in that, then I'd get, you know, my New Harmony argument going, but as long as we're keeping it to Iron County, I think Paragona's definitely. Well, it's co- it's quite beautiful. They have a beautiful picture and then they'll have a little historical thing and I think it ties together really well. Cause if you just did one or the other, it would be either too touristy and not enough historical, and if you're too historical, then people fall asleep and hit their head on the bricks, you know, so. A good blend. I'm trying to be funny.
Is there anything?
Huh?
Is Old Iron Town represented?
Oh, Old Iron Town was the other one. That was the one I'm forgetting.
Heading west.
We thought about doing Old Iron Town.
There used to be some cool pictures. I don't remember even where I saw them. I wish I could, of the old Lund Railroad Station. It had the old train and.
Lynn's, Lynn's has some of those old pictures.
But there, I, I've seen a picture that had the old Lund Railroad Station. When we were, in school, they would take us out there for a field trip. Maybe they just were trying to get rid of us, I'm not sure, but anyway, but if there was an old picture I saw one time that had the old train there.
Okay, well, maybe we could forego the, the recreation and do a, like a hit Paragona. There was a couple of the communities that, that weren't, that weren't really represented, that, there's a lot of good rich history and some beautiful, you know. Maybe they could take a picture of the Red Creek Reservoir, isn't that what it's called? Red Creek Reservoir? And then something with Paragona Town, so. Anyway, so we're moving along, but, um. I found some money, we can do it in this year's budget, just be done with it. Something that was planned on for the courthouse that. Had to do with the movers, where I was gonna have that paid out of somewhere in the general fund, it ended up getting paid as part of the construction, so there's some wiggle room there, we'll put it there. Um, I'm waiting for a, a hard number back from Rainbow, but I'm expecting around seven thousand.
Seven?
Mm-hmm. We spent something like, I don't know, fifteen or eighteen downstairs.
Are you talking entryway into like, like the little foyer area des- of going into your office and?
Are you talking in the hall?
Uh, in the hall, right when they first come in the three doors, like the one downstairs.
North and south?
First come in the entries, there's a little kind of bench.
Oh, okay.
What do you even call them?
We'd have to do some measuring. I don't know if we would have enough clearance to keep our ADA clearance.
So, since all you elected officials are here that occupy this building, are there. Are there areas or furniture or cabinetry or things we still need for build out?
Yes.
We need a few more proper chairs for your commission prep room. Um, I actually would like to have a few more of these for backups, um, when we held our, uh. Uh, we had a, a, a training and we were a little tight on chairs, and so I'd like to actually get a few more, uh, of those small tables for that other room. Not a lot, but I think, uh, two or three more chairs in this room, and that's because we sent one to the attorney and we had another one get used. And then another couple of those small tables is what I'd like to do.
What you talking about, thousand?
Probably three. Just cause the, the chairs are expensive.
Debbie, are you short anything?
We're great.
I mean, not.
I mean, I'm sure. Our office is fine. Okay, another question, John.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they still gonna do the kiosk down by the entry where that?
That is the plan. That's, that's Maria's budget for next year.
I was gonna say, if we don't do that, it'd be nice to put a rack or something there to, so, cool equipment and junk on there, nice new furniture.
Yeah, I agree.
Then they can put their advertisements or whatever.
Well, and they were good enough to put us a plug there, um, but Maria, um, it's a VGA. Um. Yeah, Maria has to budget for it.
Well, I mean, even in, in the meantime, if we get something up there, we can find something really nice and.
Yeah.
Kind of a real metal rack.
Well, I think, I think it would be a great spot for just a little bit of tourism.
I do too, and then everyone, that's where you put your stuff, don't put it on.
I spoke with her at the fair about, there are a few racks there in the fair building and all the stuff that leaves for you as well. It'd be good to update the, the actual pamphlets there.
So in your office, Nicole, are you okay?
Have audio.
You need, no.
We're good. We probably use a little storage cabinet.
I've got enough, I got enough. Here, let's go like this. Here, we can go, we can go from there to here and then into my computer. Yeah, she needs some artwork. I was gonna pray the mural myself in there.
What are you saying Cindy? Are you okay? Have some needed items? Functionally though, are you, are you equipped functionally?
Also, uh, not in this building, but I've had a request from the motor vehicle department that, um, there's no break room in that building at all. So, I've got people who are having lunch in their car, which isn't a big deal, but there's, like, the assess- or the attorney's office has a, has a break room, but they don't have access to it. So, there's a little office that Jared used to have some servers in.
Right at the top of the stairs?
Yes, and he's talking about cleaning that out, get that cleaned out to, um, allow that into just kind of a break room. Won't have any, um, water, but at least we can hold it. Small fridge or a.
Josh, can you speak to that?
I'm sorry, where are we talking about?
Where Jared used to have the server room upstairs in your building.
He still has a server room.
But he's gonna maybe move that stuff.
Thanks.
We've had a request from motor vehicles because there is no break room in that building. And technically, I think we have to provide a nursing mother room. We don't.
I'm talking about sound race today.
Many nursing mothers, but.
If we can find the room, I would love one, but we have the same issue as ours.
He was gonna talk about.
That actually helps me, because. We're running like a half day.
Well, but even, even that, without ammo, we need. Yeah, that was. Cab for one, sound race bowl.
Well, it would be on that, yeah, cause that would make a group, it's a good stuff. Probably could actually get water or bring that.
Huh?
This one, this one is what shows on the screen.
Submit something on his. What was that mini split?
It, it's, um, mini split is for the, there's a, probably this phone communication room where Jared's thinking of maybe moving the servers.
Yeah, we, I think you were.
No, this is. This was a.
Lester, will you shepherd that to the process then?
Yeah, I'll work with Jared and see what we can do.
Dan, you've made.
Surprised.
Dan, you've made note of the things we talked about for additional budgets. We can wrap that up in the next couple of weeks or whenever.
Okay, you ready for me?
I think so.
Sorry, apologize for, uh, running a little bit late, but, um, so I didn't mean, if I was, uh. Jumping in the middle of something, but, uh, so the HR and personnel, uh, section of the agenda, uh, before we get into the insurance, uh, and review and.
I think we took care of the rest of it.
Well, we already did.
With the sheriff's office.
Did?
We did.
None.
We took care of you. Approved it.
See how easily I'm replaced? I can go on a month's vacation. Um, so yeah, just, uh, so as part of, um, as a way of introduction, um, uh, Brendan here, uh, with Gallagher. Uh, in, uh, prior years, we've had, uh, you may remember Rob Souter, um, he's moved on to, uh, an- another position, a, a new opportunity. And so this year we've had the opportunity to put, uh, meet with Brendan and, and work with Brendan and his, uh, his team, uh, Brendan's done a good job. Um, Gallagher, um, represents us well, works hard for us. Um, this year, in terms of, uh, uh, benefits for the county, uh, continues to be a challenge. Um, uh, it, it is, uh, still a, a particularly, uh, difficult, uh, industry and environment and renewals, I mean, and, and we're not isolated in that. It's, um, you know, other counties, businesses, I mean, it's across the board, it's, um. But this year in particular for us, uh, we, um, we're looking at, uh, initially we were looking at some, uh, very substantial increases from Select Health. Uh, in fact, our first, um, uh, is, I think it's part of the, um, well, I know it's part of the, the review here, but by way of introduction. The first increase and, and, uh, number that was thrown at us this year was a seventeen point three percent increase on our medical premiums, uh, which was, um. I mean, we knew, we were expecting an increase, obviously, I can, I think every year you go into it expect, expecting an increase, but, uh, just trying to, uh, determine what that increase is gonna be. Seventeen three, seventeen point three was a lot higher than I expected. Uh, immediately put us into a, a, a very, much of a, an overview overhaul mode. Felt like it's, uh, it was a year to, uh, even though last year we kind of opened it up to some other carriers with Select Health coming in the last minute and, and matching. Um, one of, uh, the competitors, allowing us to stay with Select Health for another year. Uh, but with that, uh, proposed increase, we immediately just went to market, um, and, and, uh, and as a step further. Um, it was a year even we went and invited other brokers to participate in the process, just as kind of a, uh, an evaluation and, and, um. Due diligence, if you may, um, so, uh, but, and, and that's probably a healthy thing from, it's not anything that, uh, Gallagher wasn't doing for us. Or, um, any internal issues or any, it just, maybe I, I just felt like from my perspective, it's probably, um, my third year now at the county, it's probably just the time just to compare to see what else is out there. I mean, it's just, um, and, and Gallagher, Brendan, uh, especially took that in stride and just, uh, and, and still did the work and came back. Um, with the best options, quite frankly, so that's, allows us to, to keep that business relationship with Gallagher and, and feel good about that. Um, and, but allowed us to look at a number of different, uh, carriers.
Gallagher is just a broker.
Gallagher is the bro- brokerage, yes.
He's not the insured or the insurie or whatever the hell you are.
Right, uh, integral in, in the whole process, they're, they're, they provide us a lot of, uh, information, a lot of services that we don't, um, wouldn't have otherwise. Um, along with, um, help with negotiation and, and, I mean, we meet, uh, a number of times, at least quarterly during the year. We go over analytic information, we, helps us, uh, track how our plans are running, um, again, it's such a big expense for the county. Uh, and such an important benefit for our employees that it's something that we spend a lot of time on, probably more time and effort than, you know, some people realize. But it's to everybody's benefit. We wanna make sure that it's being, um, managed correctly, that we're being fiscally responsible and, uh, and, and getting the best benefit that we can for our employees. And, and I, I think we've, we've, we've accomplished, uh, those goals, so, uh, again, with that, um, kind of overview and, and explanation in terms of how we went into this process. Uh, especially adding a number of steps, uh, again, just as part of that due diligence I was explaining. Um, we're to this point today where we have some information, some numbers to propose, um, uh, in hopes that, that we can get those approved today. Um, and, uh, because we're running a little bit later in the year just because of those steps. Uh, but it's important that we get something worked out so that we can go to open enrollment and start, uh, that transition. Uh, again, it's gonna be even a little bit more cha- nothing, nothing too difficult, but a little more challenging this year just because of the change in carrier that we're proposing. So, maybe with that, um, Ren, can you?
Morning gentlemen. So Gallagher's been, I, I think, a, a good partner and Iron County and Gallagher have worked together for a lot of years to. Find affordable benefit solutions in the face of what has really been large rate increases. If you go back to twenty sixteen, it was twenty-two percent, twenty seventeen, sixteen percent, last year it came out to fourteen percent. But that got beat down to three percent with the competitive process that we led. And it was just, it was really kind of a stunner to get the seventeen point three percent, as Adrian said, from Select Health this year. Um, Select Health would argue that this process of them coming out with teens increases and then settling on a three percent because of competitive pressures. Has left the plan underfunded, and I think that Adrian and I disagree on that. We think that Select Health has just to some degree run out of gas or doesn't have the solutions to manage your plan. To the point that it would even be an average group for them. For Select Health, their average trend or medical inflation is three point seven percent. And if you were to look at the cost increases that they settled on, there were ups and downs, but over the last four years, it averaged eleven percent. More than three times worse than the average Select Health group. So we have to look at their solution, um, as questionable at best. Last year, a couple of very good competitors were brought, uh, to the forefront and.
Hey Brendan, could you speak into the microphone?
Sure. Last year, a couple of competitors were brought to the forefront, uh, Selig, Cigna and P E H P, it's the Public Employees Health Plan. And sure enough, they were the two that were the most competitive this year. Um, let's just go ahead and start in and, and look at some of the numbers and, and what that means to us. So the Select Health increased seventeen point three percent, that was negotiated down to a twelve point three. One of the frustrating things for myself and, and your human resources department is that if they could live with the twelve point three, they should bring out the twelve point three. Their argument would be, but then you're gonna beat me down to a nine or an eight, so we, we respect that, it's just the game we play in this business. It's one of the less, um, effective aspects of how we do business, but we do get where we need to be. That would have been a two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar increase to the plan settling on the twelve point three, because you're about a two point three million dollar program. As I indicated, the increases have averaged eleven percent. We went to every single health plan in the state to make sure that we've scrubbed every, uh, aspect, an ounce of competitiveness out of those that really wanted to go toe to toe for your business. Cigna and P E H P, as predicted, were the ones that came to the forefront again, so for two years in a row, I like that consistency. For a whole host of reasons, we're proposing that the county go with P E H P in, uh, twenty nineteen. First, the public sector specialists, three hundred Utah entities representing forty thousand individuals, they've been in business since two thousand and one. They're a nonprofit, they're a trust, so to the extent that P E H P has a good year, they actually will rebate to the members of this trust. As Iron County would be, uh, a percentage, uh, they're, they've been averaging two percentage points, which for you would be approximately fifty to sixty thousand dollars. So if they over reserve, if they've overpriced these forty thousand lives that you're in a pool with, they come back. Gallagher has a lot of business with P E H P. Um, they've got excellent references here, our entire block of business is happy with them, really happy with them, not just from a customer service perspective. But also from the perspective of controlling costs, we see mid-single digits year after year after year. They have a ninety-five percent network crossover with your current top one hundred providers. I'm sure as you're probably aware, the state of Utah is a bifurcated delivery system. You've got Intermountain Healthcare on one side. And then on the other side, you have all the others, the University of Utah, in, um, Mountain Star, Edward up in, uh, Salt Lake City. And their system, the network that we're proposing, and the reason we're proposing it is because it has the best rates and the best discounts. Is the opposite of the Intermountain Healthcare system, however, once you get outside of Salt Lake City, out of the, generally the Wasatch front, all networks are identical. So that was the rural health initiatives done many years ago. So that was the rural health initiatives done many years ago where Intermountain Healthcare was forced to contract with everybody because often they're the only hospital in town. So in your top one hundred providers, we see ninety-five percent crossover on the actual providers. The only ones that are missing really was a little bit of care that was done in Salt Lake City through the university system instead of the Intermountain Healthcare system. It's a ninety-seven and a half percent crossover on financial dollars. Improved cost transparency, member engagement, diabetic services, particularly diabetic services. I'm very, very hopeful there because we're looking for tools to help turn around what is significant trend for the county. If you looked at the top thirty drugs on your list, fourteen categories out of the top thirty have to do with diabetes. This diabetes programs could, this diabetic program could save those with diabetes up to two thousand dollars per year and the costs of their meds and their supplies and an equal amount share to the county. Excellent reputation and references. Dixie State is one of their clients down here. We have references, of course, that we've followed up with and to, to the group, they were solid. Final negotiation rates reflect a two percent increase to total medical plan cost. So there, they came in with a three percent last year. They're looking at another year of claims experience and saying, hey, we would have done better than Select Health did. We're coming in with a two percent and they put their money where their mouth is with a seven point five percent maximum rate guarantee in 2020. And Adrian, Adrian and I were to, were able to negotiate, this was several tiers of negotiation back and forth. We were able to negotiate an arrangement that if your claims really do modify and moderate, that if the formulas, and we do our own run, underwriting at Gallagher, if the formulas proved it, that it should be less than a seven and a half, we could come down. But we do have that safety net and that's significant.
So let me interrupt you. You said on a good year with low claims, they might rebate up to two percent. Is it possible to offset a two percent increase with a two percent rebate?
Actually, it's, it's not a rebate. What we're saying with the seven and a half percent, so the two percent is your rate increase. Those are the final numbers we've, we've ended up with. The seven and a half percent is whatever happens next year. It won't increase.
You talked about them offering a rebate if-
I see.
If the caseload is low enough.
That's not us.
That's the pool.
Specifically, it's, it's, it's the forty thousand, it's everybody, it's their insured. So they're not going to look at us, at us specifically.
Okay, but best case, we could offset a two percent increase with a two percent rebate.
Could.
It ain't going to happen, but-
It's possible. Yeah, it is possible. Thank you for clarifying, Adrian.
It isn't probable, that's all I wanted to clarify.
You bet. It's a good question. There are two things, or there are several things that I think are working against the county in terms of being a little bit less attractive in the trend space than a manufacturer. Oftentimes in, with municipalities and with counties, with school districts, they have the best looking plans because that's how you retain and how you gain employees. But in that process, sometimes you get selected against. You end up with worse risk. And by having a one hundred percent plan, because right now you have two high deductible health plans, one of them is a hundred percent after you hit your deductible, half of which the county pays through, for, through a contribution to HSAs. The other goes to eighty percent, the plan pays, twenty percent, the member pays, and then some copayments, that sort of thing. By having that one hundred percent plan, most underwriters would argue that you are attracting less attractive risk than you want. In fact, the loss ratio for the thirty-seven people on that one hundred percent plan is two hundred and thirty-seven percent. That's a really bad loss ratio. The loss ratio for the other one hundred and fifty-four people on the eighty-twenty plan, sixty-eight percent. So by eliminating this hundred percent plan, which is extraordinary, it's, I haven't seen a plan like that honestly in years. It's, it's beautiful if you can offer it and afford it, but we think it's hurting your program overall. It's part of the reason why Select Health perhaps couldn't get their arms around this. So by eliminating the hundred percent plan, you're left with what is still considered a Cadillac plan. And that is the same deductible, one thousand five hundred dollars for a single. After they hit their deductible, the plan pays eighty percent, they pay twenty percent until you get to three thousand. And along that path, they have office visit copayments that help really deal with the stress of out of pocket costs.
So what you're saying is that the hundred and fifty-four are subsidizing the thirty-seven?
Exactly.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that has a lot to do with it, absolutely.
So does P H P have anything that will help? A lot of those individuals have like, you know, other chronic diseases or things like, you know, like high cost prescriptions such as Humira, Humira or something like that. Does P H P have anything to help address that? That really has been a big benefit for, for some of those individuals.
You bet. As Adrian and I were looking at all of these different options, we did not want someone to come in, in here and buy your business. And then we're, we're faced with, you know, a fourteen percent next year. So the presentations to us had to do with exactly what you're suggesting, and that is a better prescription benefit strategy. They get counties and they have transparency solutions. They have cash back programs where if an individual, after calling customer service, is told that they can get this care at a lower hit to their deductible, that they will actually get fifty to one thousand dollars back in cash. And then the county, instead of looking at a ten thousand dollar surgery, is looking at a five thousand dollar surgery for its portion of costs. So yeah, the programs across the board with P E H P, I think, are more robust than what you had with Select Health. Select Health does a great job. I'm, I'm not down on them. We have clients that have done quite well over the years, but their number one strategy to ameliorate your big trend problem is wellness. Wellness is good, but it's not going to deal with the embrils, the rheumatoid arthritis, the cancers, the dozens of people you have in between fifty and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in claims. Uniquely, and this is shocking, you have six hundred member lives on your program. You don't have a single claim over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I would expect to see two or three in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. I wouldn't, I wouldn't fall over if I saw a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar claim. So in terms of that, now is a time that you're very attractive to someone like P E H P or their very close runner up, Cigna. Cigna did a good job. They really brought it and we put them together. It was a good battle. But P E H P is, is the place for you to be. They can control your cost, I believe, better. This is a, this is a big ship. We're not going to stop it on a dime. It could take two years for P E H P to really get a grip on, you know, what strategies are going to work better here. How about telemedicine? They've got a great program for telemedicine. Every time somebody does that, instead of having an urgent care copayment or, excuse me, hitting their deductible for three hundred and fifty or five hundred dollars, they only pay forty-nine bucks. And the balance after they get to their deductible saves the county a lot of money. So there are plenty of strategies. It's a great question and we really held their feet to the fire in terms of, you've got to bring a strategy to this because what we've been doing, even though we were able to get the rates down, which actually was at a very impressive level a couple of times, it's not working. So we're looking for a long-term fix there. Gosh, I did not mean to change that. So we're, we're saying, let's remove the hundred percent plan. Those thirty-seven people will go to the eighty-twenty plan where everybody else is. The loss ratios will get better. You won't have as much selection in your community in terms of people like, man, I'm sick. They got a hundred percent plan, that's where I'm going to go. And then there are just some minor changes in terms of going from P E H P, excuse me, from Select Health to P E H P because of how they filed with the state. So they don't have a seven dollar copay plan for generic drugs, it's ten. There are some very small changes like that, that I think in light of the big picture and the savings here of what was twelve point three coming down to two, it's significant. Any questions about medical? I mean, that's the two point four million dollar, you know, question. How, how is Gallagher going to help you, you know, keep that at a-
So are we gradually seeing the ill effects of Obamacare weeding out till we get back down to resemble where we were five years ago before we had that ridiculous disaster?
Understood. You're seeing Obamacare slowly being taken apart. In fact, there were fees that you paid this year called PCORI fees, Patient, Patient Centered Outcomes Reform Institute. And they charged you two dollars and thirty cents per member times six hundred bucks. That's gone in 2019. I'm glad to see that. The individual mandate is gone. A lot of the damage that Obamacare did to the marketplace happened in the individual market and in the small group market where there's so much pooling of risk. And as insurance companies ran out of money that, you know, they thought they were going to get through the largesse of Obamacare went away, they shifted that risk up to groups like you. So the ripple effect for that is still being fact, felt, but I do believe that you're going to see it go down over time.
We can only hope.
We can only hope.
Go ahead.
Okay. More changes. Dental insurance. You've been self-funded in the dental world with a company called Dental Select. What that means is you pay them an administration fee and then whatever your dental claims are that come through, they pay them. They've pushed your budget up in that self-funded space, seventeen point eight five percent, a thirty-two thousand dollar increase, which is really surprising to me because dental is just as steady as, as you can imagine. It's where, where I want it to be is in the three, four, maybe even two percent. So I'm concerned about their solution. It's not getting the job done. EMI is a, is not only a health plan, but they're also a great dental and vision plan. Their dental solution comes in at what would be a four point nine percent rate increase. It's, it would be fully insured, so it's not as variable. And it has a nine percent rate cap for next year. I suspect it'll come in less than that. EMI has one of the best dental networks around. Cedar City, the, the school district here is with EMI. Washington County School District is with EMI on dental. My, my own analysis shows, I think, forty dentists just in Cedar City. I think that's about all of them. And if there was one that they don't have, by golly, we'll go out and contract with them. So the recommendation is go to EMI, not just because they have a good savings in, in costs, but their plan design offers two in-network components. So at the point of service, I need dental today, not when I sign up, I need dental today. Great. Oh, look, our dentist is in their advantage network. No deductible. So you save the deductibles. You have a lot of dental work done that year. It's a two thousand dollar maximum benefit instead of fifteen hundred. So we've sweetened the plan considerably, gave you a great network, more predictable costs and a renewal cap. So our recommendation is for EMI in that space. Vision insurance, same story. Life Map, which you have a lot of services with, life insurance, long-term disability insurance, they were also your vision plan. Life Map's on a rate hold, but, you know, in, in my process and what my orders were, were from, from Adrian and Betsy is, let's go test them, let's see where they're standing. Okay. And we found that EMI came in with a nine point one five percent rate decrease, thirty-two hundred dollars. As long as we're bringing them in on the dental, we know they do a great job. They use vision service plan and VSP is the biggest vision network in the state. It makes sense to bundle that together and to save more money. And we bring in a better plan design. Instead of twenty-five dollar copayments for vision hardware, you go down to ten. Any questions on the dental? Or excuse me, on the vision?
It says decrease. That's got to be a typo. We're talking decrease.
Yeah, oh, yeah. You won't see that very often. I hope to, I hope to bring more of them around to you. I've, I've had a few this year, great decrease. Questions? Life insurance voluntary, this is still with Life Map, it's on a life hold. We looked at that competitively. We didn't find anybody that could take them out. Long-term disabilities, well, also with Life Map, same story. And your EAP program is provided through that long-term disability component, making that just even of a little bit greater value. So those two components stay right where they were. Voluntary short-term disability is with Aflac. Aflac has a really unique contract. It, it, it doesn't have offsets, meaning somebody goes on short-term disability and then they've, the, the insurance plan finds that they have a little something left in the tank at work in terms of time off or something like that, and it offsets the benefit. It's almost like not having benefits in certain spaces for certain people. So that's an excellent contract and there's not another one out there like it and we think it should stay. Voluntary work site benefits, that's your other more traditional Aflac benefits that we're familiar with. Is there any questions about that? And that, that lady on the right does all the real work. That's Jessica McGee. She's our account manager. Our commitment is to be here in Cedar City, Parawan, St. George, Beaver, every month. We've got other clients here and this is just part of our jobs to be down here every month. That's our commitment. Sometimes it'll be me, sometimes it'll be Jessica, but she's an amazing account manager. I'm available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week to Adrian and Betsy. I'm always on call and we appreciate the opportunity to work with you. And I, I, I hope that you agree that between my team and Adrian, I think we found some good solutions for you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
So at the city where I used to be, we had P E H P. And the things that they're talking about were true. I, I processed that rebate check and it came in most of the time. They had some pretty good, pretty good years. It's nice being in a trust because you know that they're not just, if they have a really good year, they pocket it as profit. They actually come back. The coverage was good.
Thank you.
We've, we've had some similar comments from other employees as part of our employee, what do we call it, the benefits, what do we call it, the employee benefits committee? Insurance committee. We had a good discussion like, we, we have had a busy couple of weeks just to try to get things finalized and we want to make sure that we went through those steps, including that meeting with the, the employees. And I think there was a, a pretty good consensus, an understanding in terms of the, the changes that are being proposed, that it's just, you know, it's reasonable, it's, it's really our best route to, again, you know, what, you know, staying with our goal in managing this, that, you know, the best way we can. I think we've done a good job. You know, that, you know, hard work has gone into it, but it's, you know, played out in a way that it's, it's benefited us in terms of some of the changes that we've made over the last few years. And again, and it's, it's such an expense to the county, you know, that Brendan's mentioned a couple of times as well as myself, that it's, you know, a two point three, two point four million dollar expense that where, you know, bears out, you know, that we need to put time and effort into it to make sure that it's, it's running well and manage the best way we can. So if there aren't any other questions or maybe concerns to address, I guess I could do my best to summarize what we're trying to get approved. So we're, now I'm stumbling over, stumbling over my words. But, so we're asking that we're able to change carriers from Select Health to P E H P for our medical coverage. That, you know, during my last update, I mentioned, you know, that we're looking at a three percent increase. We asked for and, and got this as part of a final push and final negotiation tactic, that we got another percent off of that. So that's what's, that's where that two percent came in and that's why that's changed is Brendan and I, we kind of got that down just a little bit further. So a two percent increase, the way that plays out is, and again, the major change within the plan that bears repeating is the elimination of the hundred- is the elimination of the hundred percent or what we've referred to as the buy-up plan. But I again, it's been, it's it's doc- well documented that it's been subsidized you know, by the majority of the employees. There's, it still leaves in place a very good plan. You know, Brendan referred to it as a Cadillac plan, and I think that's, I've, I see it as that. And I I always try to remind and encourage employees to recognize the fact that we have a very good benefits package. A very generous benefits package, and it and it needs to be viewed as part of our, a a big part of our overall compensation in the county. We uh, that that is a something that uh, in comparison with most other entities, um, we we can prove that and and the numbers bear it out that, um, you know, that we have a good benefit package in place. So but even with that elimination, it still leaves with, you know, the one option, um, a s- still a very good um, insurance plan for all of our employees. Uh, minor changes that Brendan's already gone over and addressed. In terms of premiums, uh, the monthly premium goes uh, that's what a lot of people just want to uh, kind of hear is is how it affects. So it's just one thing I wanna address really quick. You know, we're kinda going somewhat long, but it's important to address it, I think. So our uh, medical premiums for a single employee will go from five hun- and these are monthly costs, five hundred and thirty-three dollars seventy cents. It actually goes down to five hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents per month. The double coverage, so you're thinking like employee plus spouse or employee plus a ch- a child, you know, a two-party coverage, goes uh, from one thousand ninety-four dollars per month down to one thousand seventy-four dollars and two cents. But then with our family coverage, uh, that goes from one thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars sixty cents per month up to one thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars seventy-six cents per month. And so as we bear that, as we calculate that out across our coverages with specific to our employees, um, that's where we get that two percent increase is if we break it out in terms of those premiums with our insurance, um, or with our insured, then we would see a a two percent increase in our cost, uh, which is, I'm ecstatic with that. In fact, it's uh, in terms of where we started, um, you know, we were pretty aggressive and, I mean, I, you know, I don't know in terms of you know, I I would think that we're, I would hope that we're a a good neg- a a good negotiator, you know, in terms of, you know, the turn, some of the work that's gone in. Appreciate Brendan. Brendan really does the the legwork on that. It's easy for me to kinda point and ask, and but my philosophy is you don't get it unless you're willing to ask for it. Worst thing, you can sometimes, you're just told no. But uh, again, through those, through that process, I think we came up with a good solution with the medical being the major component of of that uh, benefits package. Uh, so with the dental uh, insurance, uh, having it uh, change over to um, uh, EMI, vision, EMI, uh, we see um, just a slight increase there, but um, I I'm not sure how specific we need to get in 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 terms of, uh, if we gotta go over premiums. Uh, the opt-out option that we've discussed, that's still continuing, that continues to run well. It's a benefit, I think, to the county. Well, I know it's a benefit to the county. It's a cost, a cost-saving measure. Uh, and it also provides a a financial incentive for the employees that qualify for that. I'm proposing that we just leave that untouched. HSA contributions, I think with uh, in terms of being able to keep our overall cost increases very low, I think uh, I propose that we just leave the HSA contributions as they are. The other supplemental coverages, uh, life, um, disability, uh, Aflac, et cetera, that we just leave those as proposed uh, or as as previously approved in prior years. Anything that we've missed? And I have the numbers in terms of how much longer you want me to talk or how much more detailed we need to get if if you need to know specific.
Down to bottom line.
So I I think I'm to the end unless you have questions or other details that you need.
The overall increase?
The two percent, um, it's, I don't know if we had that calculation, did we?
I I need to work on. I think if you factor in the smaller components of dental and vision, uh, vision went down, dental went up a little bit. They're such small components that your your true figure's gonna be about two point two, maybe two point three percent because they're eclipsed by the medical, which is technically a two point one percent.
Okay, but I think what we're waiting for is the budget increase.
Commissioner, the reason why we don't have that is just, uh, we, the final numbers actually didn't come in until late Friday. So if you wanna give us a few minutes to calculate, uh, Brendan and I hadn't had a chance to really meet on the because the numbers came in so late from some of the supplemental things. But if you wanna give us a few minutes to calculate, I could give you a number, but I can't give it to you right now.
I don't wanna vote on an ambiguous number.
Okay. Can we maybe ask, maybe just give us five or ten minutes just to kinda put some calculations together? Something we can get, we just haven't had, we we just missed it, to be honest with you.
That's fine. Yeah, let's take a break for five, ten minutes. Just let us know when you're ready.
All right, we're back. So the, the question was, what was the total?
Net increase.
Net increase.
Yes, and Commissioners, I apologize for not, I, I know that would be an import- important component in this approval process and fully intended to have it. So I apologize for the delay. We, we actually had it, but again, just because of some of the late changes, it was just things, we, we've kind of had to update and add some steps, you know, during this process. And numbers coming in even as late as, you know, late this past Friday. So again, with that apology in mind, the numbers, we were able to get that. Um, I'll break it down by benefit. The medical, we're looking at a forty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollar increase. Dental with the proposed changes, an eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollar increase. These are all annual, obviously. Uh, the vision, um, with the change, the proposed changes, that actually would decrease by three thousand, two hundred. And then we have basic life, uh, dependent coverage and long-term disability. Uh, the opt-out plan, all of those remaining unchanged with, so a net zero effect. Uh, so with those three cost changes, a total cost increase for the amount of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and four dollars.
So just to be clear, that's about two hundred and seventy dollars per full-time employee, round dollars. That's a two hundred employees. Is that correct?
Yeah, two, yeah, if you use two hundred, uh, I think the employee count right now, including part-time, seasonal, temporary, I mean, I think it's a hundred and ninety-seven employees right now. But yeah, very close, puts you right in that two hundred and seventy dollar range per employee, per year.
So the fifty-four is in addition to two point, what, million, two point two?
The number we keep referring to is just the bulk of it is in med- medical, and it's two point, two point three.
The benefits package is two point, what, million?
Two point, the medical is two point three.
That's what? How much?
Thirteen cents per hour. Well.
You are sharper than, you're sharper than a tack. Well, that's better than we expected to do. I'll give you that. I'm just always concerned that, that government's expected to provide cradle-to-grave coverage. And somebody has to pay the tab, and every year it goes up. So in view of the fact that Alma's gone, we've had this discussion about the lesser than amount. I would go ahead, I would go ahead and move the approval of additional contribution of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and four dollars into the medical package.
I would second that. All in favor?
I guess.
Aye.
Thank you.
Shall I let the minutes reflect that?
I think we've taken care of non-delegated items. Move to adjourn.
Just declare it.
We're done. Thank you for your attendance and participation today and.